Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, November 9th, 2016. At this time, would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of October 19th and the regular meeting of October 26th be approved.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. The ayes have it. That motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 19A-17 in the amount of $92,988.13 payroll. Warrant 19B-17 in the amount of $421,922.05 accounts payable. And warrant number 19C-17 in the amount of $2,268,739.75. That's the DR assessment. All dated November the 9th be approved.
And I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Again, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. The ayes have it. That motion carries unanimously. We have one piece of correspondence which comes to us from Chris Molding, who's the Race Director for the Dayton Run for Heroes. And it reads as follows. "Board of Selectmen, I wanted to personally thank you and the residents of Dayton for your generous support for the 8th Annual Dayton Run for Heroes 5K and Kids' Hero Dash, which was held September 10th. Within overcast sky and warm temperatures, our fantastic corps of volunteers passed out water, directed, and cheered on 160 runners at this year's race. Thanks to these amazing runners, we were able to raise over $7,000 for homes for our troops, putting our eight-year total over $32,000. Homes for our troops will use this money on different housing projects to help improve the quality of life for severely disabled veterans all over the country. If you have any questions about the race, feel free to contact me anytime. Again, thank you very much for your support and hope to have your support again for next year's race. Sign, Chris Molding, Race Director." Another fine year, $7,000.
Wow.
Great job. Next on the agenda, announcements. I'll start these off. Trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Call (508) 669-6431 for more information. If you need fuel assistance this winter, call Citizens for Citizens, One Taunton Green, located in Taunton, Mass., (508) 823-6346. There is a winter parking ban in effect from November 1st through April 1st of each year. No parking is allowed on any street during this time. Landfill stickers are now available for the year 2017. They are available at the transfer station only, and I repeat, only at the transfer station can you pick up your new landfill sticker, which will be affected now, effective now through the year 2017. The transfer station is open during regal hours on Tuesdays and Saturdays. Payment by check. May payable to the Town of Dayton for an increased fee. This year it will be $15. This is the first time we've had a raise on the landfill stickers, and oh, golly, I think this is only the second time in six years I've been here. So the new fee will be $15. A registration is required for the vehicle being permitted, and you must be a resident. Stickers are not transferable. I'd just like to make a comment on that statement, that stickers are not transferable. All stickers will have to be purchased at the landfill station, and when you purchase the sticker, either the transfer station attendant or yourself will be asked to put the sticker on your vehicle. We've had some misfortunate issues about people not attaching it to the vehicle and using two and three different vehicles, lending out to people with bigger vehicles. We're not here to make money, ladies and gentlemen. We're here to get rid of items that are no longer wanted or needed in households, and the cost is starting to run a little ahead of what we're taking in on revenues. So needless to say, if your registration that you purchased for $15 is found on a vehicle or in possession of a vehicle other than what it was purchased for and the registration that was shown for, that registration will be null and void, and you will forfeit the use and the entrance into the landfill transfer station for the rest of that year. A new schedule of fees for the landfill will go into effect January 1st, 2017, and any time fees are increased within the limits of the town, this board must read them three consecutive meetings for them to take effect. The new fees that we will be reading tonight will go into effect January 1st. Even though the sticker for the entire year 2017 can be purchased now, that is $15. That is in effect now. Only the new fees, whether it's a TV, a mattress, an air conditioner, whatever, will take effect on January 1st. There is a meeting of the Town Administrative Committee on Thursday, November 10th, which is tomorrow night at 6:30 PM. On Friday, November 11th, 2016, in honor of our veterans, there will be a free breakfast held at prime time, located at 1059 Somerset Ave. from 8:30 AM to 10:00 AM. This event is being catered by Alice's Last Stop and held by the Lions Club in conjunction with our Veterans Agent, Donald Hershey. Walk-ins are welcome. The Animal Control Officer will begin barn inspections next week. Representatives from Comcast will be present at the Board of Selectmen's meeting on November 30th. The public is invited to give input or ask questions about your service. Any resident who has trash pickup this Friday, your trash pickup will be delayed one day, which will happen on Saturday, November 12th. Only for those whose scheduled pickup is on Friday will it be delayed a day. And I do have one more announcement that our town clerk has asked that I read here tonight. This is the annual Dayton Lights On for the year 2016. This will be held Saturday, November 26th, 2016, right here at Town Hall. It'll begin at 3:30, and conclusion should be around 5:30 or so. Very quickly, I'll go through the agenda for the event, and storytime with Mrs. Claus at 3:30. The Dayton Elementary School chorus will perform at 4 o'clock. The Dayton Rehoboth High School Pro Musica will perform at 4:15. The Dayton Rehoboth High School Instrument Groups will have a performance at 4:30. West Dayton Christian Church will have a presentation at 4:45. And the highlight for the night, at 5 PM, will be singing Christmas carols with a distinguished guest, Senator Mike Pacico, Representative Patricia Hadad, District Attorney Mr. Quinn, and of course, none other than the three selectmen. So bring your cameras. This is a once in a year happening. And then at 5:15, it's at 5:30, it'll be a parade, and 5:30, the lights come on on the Christmas tree adjacent to Town Hall. The marching band performance will then begin around 5:30, and there'll be hay rises provided for all the kids around the track. And most of all, there'll also be an opportunity to meet Santa during one of his visits to Dayton. Kids, you must be ready to tell Santa what you want, and parents, please bring your camera. As usual, Santa will entertain the kids inside the lower level of Town Hall, climb up on that big high lap and tell Santa what you'd like. Hot coffee, hot cocoa, hot dogs, soup, and cake are available. There'll be a 50/50 raffle, and look for one of our tables or one of our elves who are selling the tickets. And as usual, we make the announcement if there's any groups out there or store owners or vendors or even individual homeowners that would wish to make a small donation for this Lights On ceremony. It is a, it does cost a little money to put it on. There is no charge for any admission. There's no charge for even the food. Everything is free, so bring your kids, bring all your hungry neighbors, anyone who wants to come and enjoy themselves. We will accept any donations at any time. Also, the Dayton Community Food Bank will be accepting donations during this entire ceremony. And as usual, this is brought to you by the Dayton Holiday Committee, which is chaired by our town clerk, Susanna Maderas, with the help of Tom Ferry and another half dozen volunteers. So people, especially the newcomers to town, if you haven't been here, this is your first visit or first holiday season in town, come out and see what the Town of Dayton does and get ready for the holiday season. I think you'll find it very, very happy and a pretty quaint little ceremony throughout the night. Again, that's Saturday, November 26th, 2016, right here at Dayton Town Hall.
I actually have a question about that. Do the selectmen get first dibs on Santa's lap?
I was just gonna say, no, you can't sit on his lap.
Actually, it can't run faster than the kids when they come inside. There's quite a line. They line right outside the door.
Those little kids will push you right out.
That's right. We do have a piece of old business tonight. This is something that we, it's a necessity that we have to approve. Review, discuss, and act to increase the Board of Selectmen's administrative assistants' hours to 40 hours. Our administrative assistant Karen Brady has been on the schedule since her first day here as our administrative assistant at 35 hours a week. With the great amount of increase in the amount of work that she has taken on, as well as getting prepared for the Town Administrator's hiring, hopefully around January or slightly after the first of the year, Karen's duties will increase a little more. So we found it necessary right now to, in preparation of the oncoming of the Town Administrator and our increased load that we now have taken on, and a lot is going on here in Town Hall, I'll entertain a motion to expand her hours, her weekly hours, to 40 hours.
So moved.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. The ayes have it. That motion carries unanimously.
I would like to say one thing, actually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for agreeing to work five more hours a week. Very appreciated. Town is very lucky to have you.
Thank you.
That doesn't mean, Brett, you get to use up those five hours.
My little projects.
Next on the agenda, new business. First on the agenda, review, discuss, and act on transfer station sticker and disposal fees. As I had mentioned a little earlier, any time this board or any fees in town for permits, licenses, whatever the case might be, any time there's gonna be a change or an increase in them, it's mandatory that this board read them three consecutive times before they can officially be put into place. At this time, I'd like to go through this, the transfer station, increase in fees, and these, there'll be copies of these available at Town Hall, so if you're up here doing any kind of business and you'd like a copy of, this is the prices, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, and all the information you'll need as far as the transfer station. Bear with me as I read this. This will be our first reading, which will occur on Wednesday, November 9th, 2016. "The Transfer Station, Dayton residents only. The hours of operation are Tuesday, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Also, Saturday, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. A one-year sticker to the transfer station for residents only will be $15. This is for sale at the transfer station only and will be affixed to the vehicle at the time of purchase, whether it be by yourself or the landfill, uh, transfer station attendant. A one-day pass to the transfer station will cost $15, and there'll also be fees in addition for whatever you're gonna dispose of. An unauthorized use for a landfill sticker, which means if it's not issued to the person and the registration on the vehicle, it is considered an unauthorized use and is liable for a fine of $1,000. The unacceptable waste products are the following: lead or acid batteries, paints, oils, barrels, cement blocks, bricks, blacktop, sheet rock, roofing material, automotive seats, gas tanks, transmissions. Those are not acceptable. All hazardous materials are banned. Generated common household waste is also unacceptable. That is your regular trash pickup, your common household waste." Now, for the schedule of fees for the disposal, this is per item, which these items will also be a part of our yearly bulky item pickup, which we go around and, after you buy your sticker, to place on the appliance or the article you'd like to get rid of, and we pick them up. These will be the fees for the year 2017, which will take effect January 1st, 2017. An air conditioner, $15. Barbecue grill, $10. Box spring, $15. A car tire, $5 apiece. Computer monitors, $10 apiece. A desk or table, $10. A clothes dryer, $15. File cabinet, $10. A mattress, $15. Microwave, $10. Propane tank, $10. A refrigerator, $15. Stove, $15. A television, $20. A truck tire, $10 each. A VCR or DVD, $10. Or DVR, I should say. Washer, $15. Or a water heater, $15. I will, there's asterisks here, as far as your air conditioners and refrigerators, in order for you to dispose of it at the transfer station, the freon must be removed. Now, we also have trailer fees. If you have an eight-foot or less trailer filled with items that you'd like to get rid of, the fee is $20. A trailer that's eight to 10 foot, the cost is $30. A trailer 10 to 15 foot long, $40. And a 16-foot trailer, which is the maximum size that we will entertain taking product off of, is $50. We also have added fees for construction debris. A half pickup truckload or a half-trailer load, and when we say trailer, that's eight foot or less, the cost will be $50. A full pickup truckload or a half-trailer load, eight foot or less, will be $75 fee. And miscellaneous metals, $20 a pickup load or $10 for a partial load. This is the first reading of our transfer station fees, and our second reading obviously will be next week. Next on the agenda, review, discuss, and act, a Highway Superintendent's recommendation for a new hire.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, may I just make a remark about the fees?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I have also heard that the, only from a couple of residents, that the $15 transfer fee is high. Actually, I, so we, I should say, researched other full-year permit fees, and they are much more expensive in the other towns and cities that surround Dayton. So I think, actually, the pricing is very fair, and again, we're not trying to make any money off it, 'cause we probably aren't, to be honest. So I just wanted to clarify that record. Off the top of my head, Rainham is $70 for a full-year permit, so we're paying almost a seventh of that cost our residents in Dayton are, so I think it's very fair.
Thank you, Brett. Where was I?
B.
B. Review, discuss, and act, Highway Superintendent's recommendation for new hire. Our superintendent, the infamous Thomas Ferry, superintendent of Streets, has sent us a request. He has been very vigorously interviewing prospects for an opening on the Highway Department, and after review of applications on hand, Mr. Ferry would like to recommend Joe Simeau of Taunton, Mass. He's the most qualified applicant on hand and would make a good fit to his department. Please contact me with any questions, and after your consideration, I will continue the hiring process with background check and a pre-employment physical and drug screening. I'd like to add, very highly recommended, Mr. Simeau. He has been a member of the United States Army. He is currently an E5 sergeant, very well decorated, and besides, not only in the service, but very experienced in the duties that he will be performing. I commend our superintendent for the choice of this applicant. Seems like an upstanding United States citizen, and I very proudly'd like to just relay some of his awards that he's earned while in the service. He has earned the Afghanistan Campaign Medal with a campaign star. He's earned the Army Commendation Medal. He's earned the Army Achievement Medal, second time. He's earned the Army Good Conduct Medal. He's earned National Defense Service Medal. He's earned the Afghanistan Campaign Medal with two campaign stars. He's earned Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Army Service Ribbon, and wow.
Wow.
Our hats off to Mr. Simeau, and we wish him the best of luck. And with that said, I will definitely entertain a motion on Superintendent Ferry's recommendation to hire this gentleman.
So moved.
Happily seconded, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to say that it's apparent from Mr. Simeau's application that not only will he bring a lot of expertise to the Highway Department, he brings a lot of valuable experience, and it is obvious that he'll be an extremely hard worker, so.
Absolutely.
Good addition.
Is he a corps of engineers, do we know?
Uh, doesn't say.
Is he military? I would say artillery.
My father was battery E., and he was radar.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. The ayes have it. This motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Simeau will be having a very happy Veterans Day this year.
That's true. And the last item on the new business for tonight, review, discuss, and act to award a bid for asbestos tile removal at the Old Town Hall slash Grange. We have a memo from Mr. James Agia, Building Commissioner, addressed to the Board of Selectmen on a recommendation to award a bid for asbestos tile removal at the Old Town Hall. Under the Dayton procurement process, Mr. Agia has contacted one, two, three, four companies to get bids and solicit them under the general procurement laws based on the estimated cost that requires at least three bids solicited. We did have the first company that was contacted wished not to bid, 'cause it was too small a job. Second one, ASafe out of Littleton, Mass., with a bid of $2,100. Another prospect submitted a bid from Elves Home Improvement of Fall River for $1,950. And the fourth bid he received was from Whaling City Environmental out of New Bedford, Mass. for a quote of $1,800. Taking these bids into consideration, Mr. James Agia's... Taking these bids into consideration, Mr. James Agia states, please look favorably upon granting Whaling City Environmental for the asbestos tile removal for a price of one thousand eight hundred dollars.
I'll make the motion to award the contract to Whaling City at the price of eighteen hundred dollars.
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
A motion's been made and seconded. Again, very well, job well done by our commissioner, who, we have to do things by, by the procurement laws of the state of Massachusetts, and he did go out and solicit four bids, three were required. And at this time, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor of awarding this bid to Whaling City Environmental in New Bedford, in the amount of eighteen hundred dollars, say aye.
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 Oppose? The ayes have it. So this cycle's work is starting.
Absolutely.
And on its, on its, on the way now.
We're fortunate that in such an old building, there wasn't more asbestos.
Uh, next, moving along, we have the part of the meeting that we entertain and listen to any reports that anyone might have.
Um, last Friday, November the fourth, I attended the Region Five Health Meeting, Health Meeting of the Coalition, uh, at the Middleborough Town Hall. And most of the meeting was a presentation from, that deals with regional health centers. I was very surprised and very happy to hear, there are two of these health centers in Fall River. One on Quarry Street, in what was the old Bradley's Building, which is near the intersection with Pleasant Street. One in the north end, on Stanley Street, and if you're familiar with Twosdale Clinic, Stanley Street is the street north of it, in the back, where they do, there's a day surgery center there. The other one is located at the former Taunton Mall. These health centers have been set up to provide health services to people who are not insured, underinsured, have some insurance, have maybe homeless, maybe migrant workers, anyone in need of medical care. And depending upon the location, they provide not only medical care, but they provide dental and vision assessments and treatment. It's open to anybody, either, any of these, and these are just the three in our area. There's also some in New Bedford and Brockton, and areas like that. But I spoke to the gentleman that's at the center on Quarry Street in Fall River, and I told him I would like to make an appointment to go down and visit the location. And once that's done, and obviously, any of the board members that would like to go, I would like to actually visit all three of them, and come back and let people in town know, if you need medical care, vision, dental, which can run into a lot of money. You can go to these centers now, and they have translation services available for anyone who may not be, speak fluent English. So if you're in need now, check into the, the new health center on Quarry Street in Fall River, the one on Stanley Street on the north end, or the medical clinic that's at the Taunton Mall. And it's on the end of the mall, where if you are stopped at the lights on Tremont Street, waiting to make a left or right turn, or go straight ahead into the mall, you can actually see the sign. I think it says something like, "We're open now." But don't wait for me to report back on my visits. If you need medical attention, this is not emergency medical care. This is the usual kinds of medical care, where you go for treatment, or some kinds of situations, like colds and headaches and all that. Obviously, this is not an emergency room. But the point in these, setting up these centers, is to relieve some of the backlog that the emergency rooms are experiencing, and to provide care, preventative care, before you get ill. I know there's been a lot of talk about Obamacare, and rates going up, and who doesn't have insurance, and who can afford insurance, but I will get as much information as I can. But in the meantime, if you're in need of medical attention, a checkup, a physical, you got a bad cold, and, and you don't have money to go to a Minute Clinic, or certainly you don't want to go to the ER and sit there for hours, depending upon where you live, check out one of these centers. But I will have more information on that. These are opening up around the state. The Region Five area consists of Bristol County, Brockton, and it actually goes down to the Cape. We had some people there, from Nantucket. So it's a, Region Five is a very large area. Funding for these centers comes through the state, and there are also donations. That's why they can help people who may not have insurance or anything else. People have, who are able to pay and would like to use the services, can set up a payment plan, if that's desirable. If you don't have a primary care physician, because you don't have the means, or you need a dentist, and certainly dentistry is very expensive, too, or, or you need glasses, check these out. But we will get more information. And, as I said, I was very pleased to hear that there's something, these have been set up now, and the, and the hospitals and the physicians are working with these centers to meet the needs of the people in the area. So language is not a barrier. So hopefully, if there are people here in town that need assistance, they'll be able to go there. But anyhow, we'll have more on that. So that was last Friday. Last Saturday, I went to the Mass Association of Health Boards' annual training, and this was held in Taunton. And when I got there, I actually met Kevin Bernado, who was there as an employee of the town of Freetown, but he was upgrading his training. And the session that I attended dealt with, excuse me, Track One, which was, started out with governance, and it talked about all of the responsibilities and duties of a board of health member, and that was led by the executive director of the organization. And, excuse me, the co-sponsor for this program was the Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health. And the other presenter for this section was Cheryl Spira, who was an attorney, on staff at the Mass Association of Health Boards. After, after the governance, we went into orientation. There was a break for lunch. There was information about Zika. Nothing new. The last time I gave you an update was the latest. And then there were other emerging issues in public health law. And this ran the gamut of everything from animal cruelty, to that situation we've all heard about in Westport, to different kinds of situations that boards of health might find themselves in. And it was a very good program. It was the first time I went, and the, I didn't earn my certificate, ta-da, and it's good until December of 2017. They hold this annual training once a year, either in Taunton or in Marlboro. And so if they offer it again next year, somebody from the town will be going. I will assume that we will have our own appointed board of health active then. But it's actually open to any of the board members that would like to go. And I would like to say, one of the people that was at the meeting, a local person that we all know, Ron O'Connor came in for part of the meeting, and provided some of the information detailed. And I would like to recognize Ron, because he was the acting director from the Department of Public Health in our area. And officially now, Ron is, is the director of local and regional health. So he was acting director. So congratulations, Ron. It was good to see you there. And Ron O'Connor is also one of the members who is serving on the organization committee for the town of Dayton, to come up with the, the qualifications and duties for a member of the Board of Health, so. And then the other thing I would like to mention is, I was at the Lions Arts Festival last Sunday, and it's always, it's always such a great event. I was able to get photos, which was the main reason I was there, of the children's art work and displays. And I'll have to look at the pictures, but the ones I remember were, I think it was Beckwith, Beckwith Middle School, I believe it was Palmer River, Dayton Elementary. There were some, some of the local preschools or private kindergarten programs also had displays. And they were just, they're always great, the, the work that the little, the little, the real little kids do. I mean, the older, the middle school children, their art work was good, too, but I always liked to see what the, the really little kids do, the ones that sit on Santa's lap. But they, I got some pictures of that, and, but the, the festival, I was fortunate, I was able to park in my niece's yard and walk over to the event, but they had shuttle buses running, and I think, from what everyone has told me, they had a record turnout. This was probably the largest turnout so far for the event. And one thing I will mention is, the Dayton Garden Club is having a Festival of the Trees. And if you go to Rujo's Farm, ask to see the, the trees, they have them set up, and each tree has a theme, and they are selling raffle tickets. And you buy your umpteen raffle tickets, and you drop them in the container that's near the tree. The trees will be raffled off, I think it's around the end of this month, and the lucky person will end up owning that tree, that's, that's fully decorated and lit. And as I remember the sign, I think it's a fundraiser to help the Lions. There's talk about enclosing the pavilion to make it usable year-round. So in any case, whether you buy tickets or not, stop by Rujo's and see the trees, because they really are pretty, and they're unique. They have a Festival of the Trees in Stowe, Vermont, every year, at the library, the Howl Kids' Hell of Day Art Center. And I always stop by there and try to get some pictures, because it truly is pretty to see what they come up with. And some of them are really funny. One might be decorated with, with kitchen, small kitchen utensils, spoons, and mixers, and whisks, and you name it, and colorful, like calico ribbon and things like that. And another one might be all decorated with all infant-type things, toys and whatever. So whatever the theme is, that's what the tree is, is, that's how the tree is set up. So that's worth, that's worth checking out. I will mention one thing. While I was at the festival, the Arts, the Arts Festival, Mr. Pacheco from the Dayton Historical Society came up to me. And so I, I just extend this message to the board. Kenny thanked the board for donating the benches from the Old Town Hall to the Dayton Historical Society. So very pleased to see that those benches will, will remain in town, and that they have found a home, and they will be useful. So he, he was, he was very appreciative of that, so.
Well, it's a beautiful thing when, when we ask.
Well, we found a home, we found a home for, we try to, we try to find a home for everything, you know?
Of course.
I would like to, all the other people that I always see when I go to the festival, the police, whoever's on duty. So I commend the Dayton Police, because, from what people told me, there were signs put out that say, you know, no parking, police order, for that particular day. And the, the interesting thing was, they weren't parking where the signs were, but where the signs ended, they were, they were parking. So the police had to move out some, some vehicles. People were using the shuttles, but then there were other people that would park way down William Street and walk back. But I would like to recognize the Dayton Police Department, everyone that was on duty. I saw Chief McDonald, I saw Sergeant Dutra, and there were other, there were other police officers. I wasn't close enough to, to speak to them. But it was, it really went very well, very orderly, considering the number of people that were there. And they weren't all just come and go, because if you got there early, and you had children in those programs, from DR down to, or the other, the other performers, just to see all the performances, and then to visit all of the vendors that were there. They had a, every table was sold, and they had set up a big tent on the south side of the parking lot at Rujo's. And there were vendors in there, too. So that was a really great event, and, so when I get my pictures, I'll put them on, on the computer, so you can see them.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, acknowledgements. I'm gonna ask my fellow colleague to take care of this agenda item, if he doesn't mind, because I know he's not gonna get a chance to beat the kids to Santa Claus.
You gotta give me something. You gotta give me something, Chairman.
If you mind, if you don't mind.
Not at all. So I have first, an anonymous donation in the amount of seventy-two, seventy-two dollars to the Council on Aging, and I'll just read the letter, from Alice Souzer, Director. A seventy-two dollar donation was made to the Council on Aging and was deposited. The town accountant and the town treasurer have been notified. I have a mo-
I make a motion that we acknowledge the anonymous donation of seventy-two dollars to Council on Aging.
I'll second that.
A motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. That motion carries unanimously.
I was so excited. I apologize. I couldn't wait for the, for you to ask for a motion.
That's good.
We have a second donation, which is fantastic. Again, this is actually from Sheila New, the Assistant Program Manager at the Council on Aging. She writes, "We are pleased to inform you that Primetime has received a bereavement donation of two hundred and fifty dollars. As usual, all donations are turned over to the town accountant and deposited in the Primetime Gift and Donations Account. Should you have any questions or need additional information, please do not hesitate to call."
I make a motion that we acknowledge the bereavement donation of two hundred and fifty dollars to Primetime.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Again, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. That motion carries unanimously. I don't foresee any public input tonight. Is there anything else that my colleagues would like to discuss or bring up?
Just a reminder to all our veterans about the breakfast on Friday morning at Primetime, starting at eight-thirty.
I think we'll all be there.
I will be, yeah.
And since our, a new selectman, Mr. Zografos, has been living on Dunkin' Donuts and junk food on the run for the last few days, working so, so many long hours, and his, his job is campaigning for one of our local politicians, we welcome him back, and now he can go and have a nice breakfast.
Absolutely. A real breakfast.
A real breakfast, yeah.
No offense, Dunkin' Donuts.
No.
We love you, too.
Not at all, not at all. With that said, entertain a motion through adjournments.
So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. That motion carries unanimously. Good night, ladies and gentlemen. Good night, cable. And don't forget, those veterans who- And don't forget, those veterans who like to come and have breakfast and chit-chat Friday morning over at Primetime, we'll see you all there. And just to reiterate, the date for the lights-on ceremony, come see Santa Claus arrive in town that night, is November twenty-sixth. And we hope you bring all the kids, all the neighbors, and first-time home buyers and new owners of property in Dayton. Please see one of the holiday festivities. It's, it's a long-running affair in the town of Dayton. Good night, everyone, and see you next week.